in the realm.
What's up, everybody? This is the poker coaching study session. Today we're gonna start with a few hand reviews. So this is the first hand where low jack open like different from the high jack. Low jack bets the flop small we call. On the turn, low jack sizes up and we call again, and then we're discussing the river playing them. So, what do you think chick PB says?
I don't think it's gonna be raising much imposition. So I think the flop's gonna be pretty standard.
Cause like you're gonna raise your best queens, but you have a lot of ace queen off here. So that's probably the the single ace you're gonna raise.
Yeah, so we play call calls a good response. And you should, uh, all right. So the turn's important. We need to look at what he's polarizing here that you're ahead of.
Should be Broadway stuff, Miami, right? Yeah, there it is. Jack ten, Queen ten.
Do you think it's happening?
Eight X.
People arising their their eighth air on a five stone. I don't know about that.
Yeah, that is a little ambitious there, right? Turning, uh, turning this third player, third pair in a straight blocker into a bluff.
Yeah, well, that's classically the thing. People can turn their unpaired hands in a bluff. They know how to do that. But do they know how to turn third pair into a bluff? No way.
Less frequent for sure.
Seven X eight X. Yeah, maybe. Maybe they lean more towards this part, right? Or maybe they probably don't check as heavy here. Well, maybe king after you check. Yeah, maybe king. Yeah.
Yeah, and they might be blasting a little bit with like king, queen, king, jack, those types of hands. But they're still probably light on buffs.
Okay, so he polarizes a little bit picks a, uh.
Yeah, so.
Sixty percent, right?
I would give him the six point one. I would let it just seems, well, I don't know actually, but you're just calling and then.
And the river was the six of hearts.
What is he barreling off with spades here is my first question.
So the shoe, hey, where has the shoe gone?
Where has all the suits gone?
Yeah, then was that where have all the flowers gone?
Uh, I don't know the name of the song, but it just it it just fit with a, uh, a tune. It's probably, um, it's probably up top somewhere. You're gonna have to find it eventually.
Oh, maybe it's because I'm too.
It's not table. Yeah, I remember. Breakdowns, maybe? No, not really here. Hand summary filters. Maybe it's under filters. You see where it says handsome or filters? There you go. Alright, so. Strategy EV and this is where we're at. So.
I think fifty fifty.
He is barreling with some. He wants. Okay, so the ones with the straight blocker. And. Kind of weird like, um, it doesn't want to have a jack here, it seems. A jack or a ten's kind of bad. I guess it's the same idea that we were talking about, like, he doesn't want to have a jack or ten because he's blocking your folds. And it's probably the same thing on the other end. So like when he jams. Probably having a jack or a ten's not great. Yeah, like the Jack's just. No bueno.
Yeah, of course.
The Jack and the ten are like the worst cards to have here.
Of course, what does he, what does he starting with on the flop? He's gonna triple off. Yeah.
Yeah, it's like the most obvious triple off bluff. So, um, you're better off. Well, I mean, it's kind of unique because like six through six. Yeah, well, there's an ace on the board.
Yeah, so Kings like second pair. Calls more often than Ace Jack off. The jacket really bad. The ten is also really bad. That's what we see here. Jack and then even the queen, you know, Queen ten. King queen. So yeah. So.
Well, the queen is interesting because you beat the Jack, the ace, ten, ace, Jack, and I think maybe there's enough combos at that point now because.
Why I kept this end is because we didn't block the flush. I was like yum yum. I wanna call. But then the Jack felt terrible and then I thought about it and I said, okay, I only beat this ten.
Yeah, it's good. It's good fold heads up play like I feel like it's an easy. This is an easy spot to autopilot and just say, well, I gotta be balanced and the solver said blah, 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 blah. So I call. Yeah, that was a good one. Heads up.
Uh, let's see this one.
Seven, six infinitely deep. Well, not really. Your opponent's not too deep.
Low Jack, eighty big blends effective, raise seven, six, right?
Yes, yeah, I would definitely be raising. I mean, you got the table just covered. It's a PKO like you should definitely be pretty, uh, pretty wide here.
But also we flop this. I'm like, okay, I'm gonna check.
I like checking.
He bets pretty big.
Do we ever bet big on that flop?
Probably. Yeah, that was my answer, Tim. Exactly. I don't think you want to use this hand necessarily, but you do have big bets on this flop, I think. Yeah, seven nine is, you can't go too big though, like seven, nine is a real is a real hand here. And, um, that's gonna keep us behaved a little bit.
Yeah, but how much seven, nine does he flash from the button being covered?
Probably, yeah. Well, I mean, I don't know.
And so probably zero.
You can look at the chippy V range just to kind of give you an idea.
He's probably three betting some of his suit, a lot of his suited nines, right?
A guy with two hundred big blinds, maybe, maybe not.
Oh, eh, well, low Jack, I think, but I'm gonna, I'll Jack low Jack raise button flat tall. Nine, seven is in there.
I would think so.
Okay, so.
Stuff like this is you can bet this hand kind of like on a little over half pot, I think.
So, ten of diamonds, six.
It's really not as good as it looks.
So my strategy on the flop, uh, no big betting.
No, no.
Well, just bad small, just a small twenty five percent of the time.
The range is distributed, like it's distributed through the whole range. Every combo is gonna like clip a little bit of this. Yeah.
Lower over closing over pairs, nine X.
Value.
Yeah.
Yeah, tens and jacks, it seems to converge around.
Uh, he bets three point seven, so he goes big. Does he? Is he supposed to go big here? Yeah.
Yeah, he's got, he's got big bets. His size is okay.
So. We call, and the turn is the five of spade.
Before we look at it, we didn't really theorize how we were supposed to play this. Just to kind of like, so we don't have, it's kind of like taking the test while looking at the answers, right?
Oh, we're gonna have a lot of check raising in our strategy, but not with this hand. Um, I think this hand is a pretty easy check call.
I agree. Check calling the flop at the turn. We played check. And he polarizes on the five. Like, I definitely think this is just a pretty slam dunk call spot, especially when it runs out rainbow. Rainbow's a little concerning, I guess, just because it's gonna push some value, value heavy, but you're blocking the straight.
Just betting pretty big here. So nine. Probably more like fifteen, eighty percent pot.
Yeah, go with the one that's the primary node. So like a polarized, so versus the polarized is still just a call. And then what happens on the river?
We're beating his buffs. We have a lot of outs to, uh, the near nuts.
Still no, no bets here. Unless, then he just bets so big.
Yeah, like this feels like two pair are set, right? Like, cause you have over pairs. You're gonna play this way some, right? So. Like.
Yeah, I think we're facing like bucket eights. That's what I think we're facing.
This could be like, this could be a lot of stuff like he could, he could triple off with a lot of ten X here, like his better ones. Like you said, pocket aids, seven, nine's gonna make some sense here.
Nitty guy who didn't three bet jacks pre.
And he, he just committed to it like, um, into a guy that just has him covered by, he's got a big bounty too. So it's. Well, I say big, it's just, it's bigger than starting.
Yeah, he's also like a bit the reggy. So I think I made a mistake here. I ended up folding. I don't think I like folding.
What do you beat, man?
Queen, Jack.
Well, just like you just beat airballs is the thing.
Yeah, I know.
Queen, Jack, nine, queen.
But.
Nine, nine, Jack.
I, I remember like thinking about how much I wanted to call here. I folded because like when people bet river against me, it's like, uh, usually a very narrow range. But yeah, and people like don't bet the river for ten value often enough as well. So it's like.
So the spade on a turn really, I think is gonna drive down your bluff catching because like that reduces barrels, right? Cause it's a rainbow. So like maybe if it was a diamond, a heart, a club, now he's got some, he picked up some backdoor flushes. He might have to bluff off.
Well, I think it changes. It changes the regions that continue betting and what like what you're saying, I think they're more unintuitive. Like in game, I think like people are gonna give up some of that combos that are gonna keep barreling in a solver when it runs out rainbow. So I don't know if it necessarily like changes the bluff frequency in theory.
So this is his.
But in game it does.
Like he's supposed to rip it.
So he's, like I said, Jack, you beat Jack nine. He's just taking Queen eight to the streets. That's pretty wild. Nine, eight, blocking the straight like he's jamming quite a bit of stuff here. Queen, Jack makes a good one. King, Jack.
I just assume, especially people with like VP of eighteen, I just assume they're not capable until they prove that they are. Like I'll watch their showdowns with other people. Once they show that they can like they have moves, then I will give them respect. Until then, like I'm just not bluff catching these people.
Oh, yeah, but don't worry about this guy. He's a rig from Brazil. He has at least alpha million in winnings.
There's six.
Oh, you told me that that he's a guy with moves like that. Now I'm thinking about it.
So what are you saying?
There's six combos to get here like this. Normalize the range.
Well, I mean. It's because of the bets he took, I think that it's just been like fractionalized. It doesn't mean that he actually doesn't have anything in game here. If he's like using some of these other bet sizes as his primary frequencies, right?
So basically dumps it. So you guys wanna call with? What here?
I'm not calling with a, I'm not calling with seven, six, but I think having a seven or nine is good.
What do you call with in your range? You open.
Okay, so if I, if I can get theoretical for a second, um, I know in spots like this, uh, it's actually much better for us to have a pair with a board card. And just have a pocket pair. So I could much rather have this hand seven, six rather than pocket sevens. Because currently we block, uh, you know, two of the combos of, uh, pocket sixes, which is an important part of his, uh, value range. Whereas with pocket sevens, we, uh, we only block one extra combo of nine, seven.
Yeah.
So that's kind of nice.
The worst combos though.
I really wanted to call, I remember, and I was like, oh my God, like I have a big stack. He's tripling it off. He's a good player, blah, 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 blah. And then I'm like, how do I defend my range here? If I take this line, I mean, what do I show him up with here?
So I mean, I would say, I would say.
Is it better to have a ten here or?
All right.
Go ahead, Ken. Sorry.
I think this, if you're gonna defend this combo, seven, six, it's probably best just to do the seven, six of spades. Cause that blocks backdoor flush draws are gonna start bound on the flop. So you call one of four of them and just pick the spades.
Would you rather call a ten here?
You gotta call ten.
Definitely want a ten. That's a ten is great.
You don't get to fold tens. I don't.
What else?
We didn't talk about this, but he in practice probably has some two pairs here. Like, can he bet ten eight for value three streets? I think so.
Yeah. You could have ten eight, you could have nine, seven, you could have, uh, tens, eights.
I mean, yeah.
Ten nine suited makes a pretty decent bluff catcher. If we are inclined to bluff catching this guy, I'm still. I'm, I'm just really hyper fixated on this VP of eighteen. I know that he's making a lot of money, but some people make a lot of money nut peddling. And, uh, is it possible that that's this guy's type? Like, is he just making good hands?
I, I don't think like we're early in that.
Damn, I was gonna say like you, you, I think you're over fixating on it. Like this is, you can look, this is like we just started thirty, thirty, forty minutes of this tournament. Everyone has a starting bounty. Everyone has about a hundred big blinds. It's not very deep in the tournament. So this guy, it's on a Sunday or no, this is a Saturday tournament, right?
Yeah.
So like it's middle of the day. I, I really wouldn't read too much into the fact that he's only got an eighteen VP.
So the guy dumps it on me. And on the same. And I'm like seven, six and.
I still have over pairs too, right?
Do we? I think we do. That's a good question.
We got them all. I said they're all.
But we didn't check raise.
Look at.
Well, we're not gonna be necessarily check raising when we're the Steve.
Look at these ten and look at seven, six.
Yeah. Oh, look, I identified a good bluff catcher, ten, nine. It's a great one.
Those spades does make the most. So at least I made a little sense.
Yeah.
So if I was gonna pick one of the four combos, this would be the one, the spades would be best, right?
Yeah, so you'd rather call with ten, uh, uh, seven, six here than a ten in your hand.
Well, I mean, you gotta, you can't look at that in a vacuum and just say that. You gotta look at what he's bluffing. What is he jamming with? And does that make sense in real life?
Yeah, and it's not any ten, ten, nine is what keeps.
So like. So like, what is he bluffing here? And why does having like a six, seven?
Trips.
Those aren't bluffs though.
He's not. Oh, yeah.
I mean, having the seven is nice to block nine, seven and seven, five.
Yeah, yeah, of course.
Bluffing a seven that much.
Yeah, seven, seven X makes a lot of sense. Like, okay, so like the obvious bluffs are coming from the direct overcards. King, Jack, Queen, Jack, which are kind of like, those are pretty natural triple offs. With the overcards. Um, the ace, four, ace, three, ace deuce is pretty unintuitive for me. I'm not finding, uh, triples with those guys.
I agree.
The seven is just a straight now, so. Or is it five, six? No, it's not. Okay, so A seven's an interesting one.
Yeah, straight blockers, like he's.
Okay, so I don't think this is a crazy range. Like this is based somewhat in reality, like the queen eight may be stretching a bit.
Yeah.
But, um, I think for the most part. This isn't too crazy. So like a six, seven would probably make a pretty solid bluff catcher.
I'm kind of surprised Queen Jack keeps going for it on the river.
Why, why, why? So you think that one's like the most obvious one to me in my mind?
Yeah, changing out to fold.
You get kings, you get kings to fold, you get better queens to fold, you get aces to fold.
It went bet, 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 right? Like we don't have really any better king X or, or queen X.
So this is definitely a thing that guy I need to find a call with here. And I, I'm like, oh my God. I really wanted to call and was like, I can't call because people don't love the river often enough, but I really had the right hand to do it.
Well, there's also a couple more things that we're just kind of admitting is the fact that you have this guy covered by a lot.
Yeah.
And it's a PKO.
Yeah.
Which kind of like.
It looks like, wow, you look at this line like twenty six on the river, like go ahead, call me with this.
You guys have heard this concept that, um, you know, the spots that are, um, that are, you know, mixed or balanced strategies in the, um, in the solver are never mixes against different players because no one is bluffing the right frequencies. Someone is bluffing massively and the next person is over bluffing massively. He is, then like it's either a clear color or a clear fold. And the problem is you just don't.
Well, it's not picking any folds from seven, six. And then.
But it's close, you know, like against a different player, it could be an easy fault. Whereas against a different player, it could also be an easy call.
I mean.
Seven as well. So you really want to have like a pair and a seven. You're snapping.
Diamonds are actually the best, right? Not spades.
Yeah, Tim, I would slightly disagree. I think if someone's over bluffing massively, that it'll become apparent pretty quickly.
I mean, yeah, yeah, for sure. Definitely.
Most people are under bluffing.
I'm just claiming that like there's an idea that, you know, very few people are like close to the balance strategy. People are way off on one side, usually one side and occasionally the other.
I mean, I just fall here honestly, pretty quickly.
I know, but the machine says that we have a great call.
It says you have a call that's worth point one, six big points.
My rule of thumb is like, I'm a nit and I typically give people credit and don't, uh, don't think they're bluffing. So when I have those moments where I really just want to call. I just call. Cause like there's something in there that's making me want to call and normally I want to fold. So I'm just gonna okay.
Okay, so I remember this one, this one I was, uh, the. I think this is the main event and we're in the money. This is a deep one.
This is the same tournament, it looks like.
Um, could be, but.
Yeah, twenty. Yeah, yeah, for sure. Or no, maybe it's not the same one. Just because they have twenty fives doesn't mean it's a.
Yeah. Um, actually, it's not the same.
It's not the background. You're right. Hundred percent.
So.
I got debated.
Button opens, we have fifty big ones. Uh, what do you guys do with King seven off?
How deep are you? You said fifty effective.
Yeah.
King seven. So is he covered? No, he covers you.
Yeah.
Makes it a better call, right?
I would lean on the less aggressive side if I'm covered, but it's gonna be, it's gonna be a competitive option.
It's gonna mix regardless. So you really can't make a mistake, right?
So what you should do, Louis, is find a spot with the PKO ranges real quick. We, I, I know what the chippy V ones look like. I do. But find like an ICM, go to PKO and find one where you're basically even stacked but covered. And see how the behavior changes.
Yep.
I'll see PKO as well.
Oh, and they won't, uh, they won't have post flop, right?
Uh, you gotta go to pre flop only. That's why. No, no, yeah, right there. Um, ICM.
Yep.
Ah, there we go.
PKO and do whatever adjustment you want. I mean.
More like fifty B.
Yeah, just do like a hu, like, let's not make ICM complicated too much. Just like look at a hundred percent left or something. Or fifty percent or something. I don't know.
On the decent one.
Danny says he found a decent one.
And the one that I found, it looks like King six and King five are going for it quite a bit and King seven is just pure calling.
Right. This is a good one because, okay, we're covered barely. And you, you see the same behavior. It's just a little bit less. So you know, it's fine. It's good. It's not bad.
All right, this one's slightly different. And they're making it ten as well. Like you're going pretty big.
They're using that over polarizing thing from the big blind again, which.
I guess cause PKO and we're covered, we want to kind of size up a little bit and do it less often.
You want to send a message, let them know you're not messing around.
I went with the three bet, nine big blends.
Yeah, it's fine. I think, I think it's good.
Lot nine, five, seven.
All right. I don't like your flop bet. Uh, this is a flop. I think you need to be more polar. So like I would probably be using like fifty percent at the smallest or like seventy five percent even.
Yeah, I think that's reasonable. I think, uh, with the straight being out there. We don't want to go too big. So fifty seems like a lovely place to end up.
Mm hmm.
So King six and seven.
Sovere agrees basically.
Big bets, lots of big bets, fifty percent, lots of red.
Yeah, I mean, like you have there. There is a ton. Yeah, you can just stuff it. Look at that. There's a ton of turn cards that you're gonna be able to barrel on the turn. Like a spade's not gonna be, a spade's gonna be reasonable, a club's gonna be reasonable. You can turn a straight, a king's gonna be reasonable.
So I go one third. Uh, he calls. And then should I like bet this turn?
Yeah, I think so.
I think you gotta keep around. You got your gutter. You got, you really have shit other than your gutter.
I definitely, so I got an interesting question. So like. Yeah, you, you should keep barreling it, but you kind of. If you, if you polarize correctly on the flop, do we just pile it on the turn here? Or do we like, what do, what do we do?
It's, it's all in a, a boot.
Yeah, it looks like we pile.
That makes sense. I mean, yeah, call, call me up the straight. Show me.
Yeah, like he's gonna have to fold Jack ten. He's gonna have to fold flush draws. He's gonna have to fold.
He's like, he's ten of clubs and he's just crying.
Ace eight's gonna have to let go. Ace five's gonna have to let go. Pocket sevens. If he has all the.
Ace eight's gonna call.
Versus jam?
Every eight calls. Look at that.
Yeah, it's pretty wild. They're actually, they're actually.
Couple flush draw. And like, yeah, we have a lot of bluffs, natural bluffs.
So do you think that's a rea, you think that's a, uh, reality range though? You think that they're gonna just be calling off second pair there?
In a three bet pot.
In a three bet pot?
Um, probably not every eight.
This guy's got a fiery.
Depends on the person.
Yeah, it does depend on the person. Yeah, this is fiery thirty three.
You bet, you bet bigish and he jammed you off of it.
Yeah.
That sucks. I mean, there's not a lot you can do.
Yeah, such a big portion of my stack.
Those are so sad when you're like, I'm perfectly prepared to give you my chips if you let me bluff the river, but.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. It's like he did you a favor almost.
Feels bad spot where I'm leave, I'm like wondering if I should have done it or not. If giving away the, the two barrels, good idea or not, I should have done it even harder.
I think it's great.
So let me add, let's take a look real quick. What size did you three bet? If you're super deep, so you went like full chippy V sizing.
Yeah. I thought I was gonna stop there. When he calls, he, I bet the flop. I thought I was gonna stop there as well.
Well, fair.
And then he calls. I'm like, oh my goodness, the dude. I'm like, I have the king is paid.
Yeah, I guess I just would be curious if like we're, well, we don't really want to use smaller sizing. We've already seen that like. You want to use actually bigger sizing is the funny part.
Yeah, so my plan on the deuce of spade third, I have the king. So I'm blasting and then if he calls, I'm jamming in the spade, spade river. Would have been a great river to jam.
Would it have been though? Like he's got some ace X that continues like ace, ace of clubs. Like ace, jack of clubs gets here sometimes.
Yeah, but.
And our value portion is like.
Flush can please have the ultimate blocker. I have not low as well.
Yeah, I, I got into a spot like this yesterday, Louis, where it was like, except it was like, I took, it was a dunk flop. I got a really good dunk turn. And then the ace completed the flush, which I also had like a relevant blocker for. So I just jammed it and it seemed to be kind of like a, a punty thing, but your situation's a little different like. I just think the ace is probably better for his value range than your bluff range, but I don't know.
Okay.
Is there a way you can look at that? Can you look at like something where you're not all in by the turn?
No.
Not really, huh? You could take maybe that.
So that it starts from here. I should polarize the flop and then jam the turn.
Yeah, I think you're right.
Really bad.
Do you have any turn what's?
Any traps?
On the turn, like you're saying like.
I wouldn't think so, right? Yeah, yeah. Like, do we ever check a good hand, basically? I wouldn't think so, right? Yeah, yeah, like do we ever check a good hand, basically?
I think when the double flush draw comes in. It's just gonna make like the components of our range really kind of explode.
Pocket Kings checks some.
Yeah, I guess it's, okay, yeah, okay, there you go, pocket Kings is your, is what you're, uh, you're putting the brakes on with. Does it prefer nine eights also putting the brakes on, uh, the Kings, just, does it prefer to have the blocker or not the blocker when it checks? Oh, if, if you don't have the blocker, you're going bananas.
Yeah.
Yeah, if you don't have either blocker, yeah.
Either blocker, yeah.
Kings are nice cuz they still have like Queen Jack, Queen ten, Jack ten that we unblock all of.
Well, they can also, it's a hand that's gonna be able to stand up to a jam, like when you check, you're gonna expect like some heat coming your way some of the time. And like eight, nine is gonna be good.
Hands that I mentioned, right?
Yep, exactly. Eight, nine's gonna be good, Kings are gonna be good.
Oh, yeah.
This was a good hand, I like this hand, and um, I think, like you said, I, I make this mistake a lot too, like when I three bet. I have a problem under polarizing, so I've been studying this stuff lately and. I think Ken's actually really good at recognizing these big bets.
Yeah, and there's, I've, I've been looking at the same thing, like if you get into a habit of always doing quarter or third, you're missing a lot of half pot bets.
Yeah, and you're not getting folds from the parts of the range that you need to get folds from sometimes, so you show up. With weird trees on later streets.
Yeah, I agree.
Yeah, so that was the same.
Yeah, you should come to the Peter session, Louis.
I, I know, why?
Every Monday night.
So good three bet.
It is?
Hello, Louis, I'm glad you found that one, and I think it was really textbook when you, um, you know, you had the blocker for the turn flush draw, I think that one was pretty textbook, it just sucks that he got you.
Yeah, yeah.
Must be real good.
Yeah.
But it's okay, you, just feels bad when you do it, but I thought I had to do it, I did.
Yeah, yeah, but if you wanna get paid when you have like aces and kings there, then like obviously you, you have to be able to have that in your game.
Yeah, I, I think it's good.
My question here is, is this a value bet on the river?
Uh, let's see what you did, so you raised.
Low jazz, small, he called.
Uh, is this always a C bet small? Like, I think you do have some big bets sometimes, but this hand I think does prefer small.
Yeah, I think it's a nice small C bet, there's, um, we have double backdoors, backdoor straight, backdoor flush, so we, a lot of turn cards we're actually gonna like with this hand.
You're also blocking some check raises, like having the eight, I think is like not to be slept on here, so. You can, um, you're gonna get check raised less, holding the eight and blocking one of the backdoors, so I think a small bet is good.
Fine. Changes nothing, should I barrel this time?
Um, five, four gets there, but he didn't check raise you, so he's got fractions of five, four. Um, I would polarize here, I like. Uh, well, okay, so we don't have.
I'm not sure, I think this hand could just.
I don't think we need to, yeah, but sometimes I'm wrong about these a size, so I don't know.
I think maybe the better ones, maybe the better ones, like you might keep barreling the weaker ones that are blocking some of the straights stuff. But it, it is one of those things, like you don't wanna turn ace high into a bluff very frequently. So first, let's look at the river, let's look at the flop sizing, so, um. Yeah, it's just mainly a small bet, there are some polar aspects here. But, um.
Yeah, so that, that orbit sizing, let me just look at it real fast, it's like aces. And some straight draw stuff like ten eight.
Yeah, you have fractions of all the aces, like ace eights in there, like the eights are actually uh, pretty, eights and nines are a pretty big component of that sizing.
Yeah, but for value, it's like pocket aces, is king, king, queen, and then for value, it's like X nine X. For bluff, it's eight X nine X, okay, that makes sense.
So he plays check again, and what do we do? So we do bet some of the weaker ones, the ones that are blocking the bottom end and these middling ones, the best ones we are slowing down with. So.
The hearts.
The weak ones have a straight draw too.
Yeah, the weak ones are blocked, yeah, yeah, they do have some of that. Yeah, um, hearts are the obvious ones, so like if you don't have hearts, it's mainly a check. Unless you have the wheel ones.
So wheels are barrel, so you do a double barrel half of the.
Gutters, yeah.
Those are goodies, five, five X and four X are goodies.
Yeah, but like ace deuce is.
Well, ace deuce is just garbage.
Ace five, ace four are obvious.
Okay.
Yeah, so it's good.
Okay, and then on the river, should I value bet my ace?
I think if you do, you probably wanna go bigger than five, one.
It's fifty, a bit more now.
Yeah, you might. Be surprised about it.
Crazy, I think, I mean, I think our um, sizings with like a one hand come down when there's a flush or a straight on board.
Oh, it is a heart.
I think I still, if I'm gonna bet, yeah.
This race feels sus to me, to be honest.
Yeah, me too.
Do you bet here, Cam?
Yeah, I like it. Cause you don't get raised enough, you don't get raised enough, he's gonna cry call with a king a lot here, right?
Yeah, and we, we beat ace five, ace four, ace deuce, you know, we're eight, eight plays against those hands.
Yeah, you beat some aces, he's gonna call.
It's annoying, right? Cuz our hand is pretty face up and it opens us up, but most villains won't take advantage and. They're not gonna play the game of chicken there.
What's this buying, twenty-five hours, fifty?
Uh, Jerry Yang is a, a medium to higher stakes reg, I know, so.
Think this was a big one, don't know.
This, Ja- if Jerry Yang's playing it, it's above a twenty-five.
I think it's the eighty-eight, but I'm not sure.
I mean, I still, people generally raise enough bluffs here.
Imperial too, I think he's a little higher.
Oh, I bet the river and then he chick raised me.
And you.
Yeah, I feel, I feel like when you, okay, so this is why I wanna polarize the river more, you're gonna get less of this, the bigger size you bet. But, um.
So throw out like a seventy-five percent instead?
Yeah, like seventy-five or closer to pot, probably.
Or more with the ace eight of hearts than the ace eight of spade.
Well, your, your bet's pretty good, Louis.
There's an eight point five, but.
You're a majority checkers, that's what I see for them. Having an eight takes is bad, having a nine X is bad. Cuz you block the things that go around this here.
Yeah.
You wanted to call eight, seven.
Pretty interesting, I think, honestly, I wouldn't beat yourself up about it.
You bet like a lot of aces, but not this one.
Can we see his bluff? And then your response? So what's he supposed to be bluffing here with, like, bluffs will be like, maybe a pair and a one heart hand, so like seven.
Five, five, five queen with a heart.
With queen hearts.
He went with like an eighteen, which is not a thing.
So there you go, queen six, look at queen six, queen six is a good one.
All in.
Turning kings into bluff, king jack, king nine, king eight.
Those aren't bluffs.
Uh.
Oh, I'm sorry, they are. I'm sorry, they are.
Yeah, there's an ace on the river now, so like you're gonna.
Or no? King eight off, oh, king eight off.
It's, it's a bluff, not a value.
Alright. So if he ships.
Part of the king in a bluff feels bad.
Does it feel bad when they're folding ace queen?
No. I don't think I'd get people to fold aces.
You gotta have, I think you gotta have a heart to make that, to make the magic happen with that, if you got the king of hearts, maybe you can.
Oh, yeah, so I'm saying you probably gotta have a heart, but still.
Yeah, so it's not really a value bet, that's why.
Louis, that's such a different spot for you cuz your MDF is so different, what if, give him the raise eighteen and see what your response is?
Yeah, you're indifferently calling, or it's whatever.
This guy is never bluffing enough. But mixes here, I mean, it's always a fold.
Honestly, I kinda like the logic, Louis, like, if you find, if you find a, if you're playing defense and you find a spot that's mixing. Simplify to a fold, because they're not finding the aggression frequency, they need to make it indifferent.
Yeah.
And I see other spots where like I'm making like ten big blind errors sometimes, so you know, focus on those.
For him to check back river, he has to have a decent amount of faith that you're gonna either value bet your aces when they hit here or um, like you're gonna bluff.
I know, and it's extremely annoying, Cam.
Well, it can, king, uh, king of hearts makes a lot of sense, actually, it's a, a check. Like, uh, you, I, I honestly, I think the king of hearts is pretty, uh, pretty gangster here on the river. Because when he bets, like calling, how often do you think you really win when you call a big, a, a six big blind bet with the king of hearts in your hand?
Never.
Yeah, but I mean, I, I don't think people find, I don't really know that he's raising a king of heart, it's like Jack here, like I don't know that.
It's, that's a simple big mind defense, so there's.
Sure. Sure, yeah, we don't, we don't know that, and you're, you're right, um.
I think most people would be happy to call a small bet or fold if they think that you just always have it, which.
If it's an eighty-eight, though, I think they're gonna be a little more sophisticated in some of these spots, but you know, I, I tend to agree with you. Like if Jerry Yang is sitting there and he, and he clips it back at me, I think he definitely could have, uh, some of these GTO spots.
Yeah.
But then, you know, I'm saying, like, they have to have confidence in the villain that they're against too, that's gonna turn hands in the bluffs. You know, aren't gonna check back aces a lot here cuz the flush comes in, quote unquote, you know what I mean, like they gotta have confidence that someone's gonna barrel. Uh, he may have a history with J L.
The point is with the king, you don't care if it goes check, check.
Yeah, exactly, that's, that's the idea behind it.
You're still happy.
You're happy to check it down and, and just try to realize equity, but you're also happy to turn it into a bluff. Cuz you have the nut flush blocker and he's gonna have a hell of a time with a mediocre ace.
Right, we have give ups and we have like seven X that, that doesn't try to bluff, yeah.
I'm, I'm not gonna pretend and say like, uh, I'm gonna find the king of hearts bluff here if I'm a zen. But, uh, I like it, I like it a lot.
I mean, it's in, it's in the solution, right?
Yeah, and I, I've just been trying, okay, so like, one thing I've been personally trying to diverge a little bit from is this idea of playing call to. Um, try to realize equity with like middling parts of the range and looking at maybe turning some more of that stuff into bluffs against. There's, to get stronger parts of their range to fold. Like, uh, uh, it's been kind of the gospel we've preached around here for a while, it's like. The idea of ca- uh, turning third or second pair into a bluff is blasphemy, you know?
Yeah, it's not great, usually.
But.
Cuz people were doing it wrong.
I think it's, I think it's the higher level you get, it's, I think the higher level you get, the better it becomes.
Interestingly enough, we were talking about this in another group I was at yesterday, so last night I started going through my river raise bluffs. And I actually do it twenty-five percent of the time and I went through and looked at them, and a lot of them are under pairs that are.
What do you mean, what do you mean twenty-five percent of the time?
The twenty-five percent of the time I raised on the river, it was a bluff.
Okay.
And a lot of those were under pairs to the board, like I, you know, on the, a pair on the board, but not worse than top pair. That had, also had a blocker. So I mean. Some of them were really bad to do too, though, like, I'm not saying I hit them all right, it was a kind of, it's actually quite a bit of a hard show to go through all those ends. But, you know.
Frequency, cuz I think for a lot of people, it's lower than that.
You got a, you got Barbara, Barbara in the house.
Alright, let's see what happens here, uh, the cutoff opens from seventy-five big blends.
Okay.
Eight, six, two, from the small one.
It's a easy defend, I think.
Is it?
Mm-hmm.
Uh, small blind, I think maybe eight, I think eight, six is a bit wide.
I would fold.
Eight, seven, baby, one gapper, I don't think.
Uh, this is one guy. Seventy-five effective, though?
You nits, just call it.
Wait, wait, what was the effective?
Seventy-five big.
Seventy-five.
Small blind versus cutoff.
Oh, I see.
Eight, six is raising, eight, six is raising sometimes when you're a little bit deeper and it's always defending.
Oh, easy call, right?
Yeah, we're deep enough, yeah.
It's, even, I think even if you go shorter, like, I'm looking at, okay, it's twenty-five. I don't think. Folding at forty, it's calling at, no, it's folding at thirty-five, calling at forty, so like forty's kind of the cutoff. And you're right, you're right, twenty-five is no bueno, too short.
So I went with the call.
Good.
On the flop, flop nothing, check. Uh, he bets.
Half pot-ish.
But you're multi-way.
We call.
Do we defend multi-way?
You got middle pair, you don't just get to open for the.
Where heads up when we defend. So on the turn, uh, he bets eleven.
Ooh, this is kind of an interesting spot.
And on the turn, I thought, uh.
He might.
His range is on cap.
Yeah, that's kind of what I'm thinking, Danny, I don't know, I don't know.
I don't know either.
What do you, what is it you guys don't know?
Do you call or do you raise?
Well, to me, it's an easy raise cuz. He doesn't have a six very much, he doesn't have a safe very much, so it's more like his jack, his king, his queen.
Well, just because he doesn't have a bunch of value that beats you doesn't necessarily mean you always raise.
Two flush draws, raise.
No, exactly, the other thing, right then, two flush.
And a bunch of straight draws, but no straights, it's like pretty easy.
Honestly, I don't, I don't, I don't hate it.
It makes river play super awkward on a lot of rivers. You're like too deep, right? You wanna jam if you're raising and you can't. I don't know.
Well, we can look at it.
Vulnerable.
Yeah.
Well, so the one thing I would say is like, a lot of where we're getting value from is incomplete equity. So, like, there's two components here, two components, component one is his aces, ace X. We're getting value from, component two is flush draw, so he's gonna have like king, queen of hearts, that's gonna be doing this, he's gonna have. Sometimes he's gonna have like ace nine of hearts doing this. He's gonna have like maybe five, four of spades doing this. So like, there's a lot of hands that are gonna throw a big bet on the turn that aren't going to come off a single chip on the river, which kind of puts me in like. Raise territory, also conversely, like, if he has a hand like he has, an ace, unblocking the flush draws. He's gonna be more like, likely to defend. I mean, he's defending the turn, but when you get a brick on the river, he's gonna be more likely to bluff catch, I think, so I kinda. And it's a PKO, so you wanna pile chips in, I like the raise a lot, actually, I think.
Like river being too awkward, we're gonna hit the river with an S P R point five, like, on nearly all rivers, we're just gonna put the chips in and it's fine, it's great.
Yeah, so you should look at it, though, you should definitely like pull up the math machine and see, see, just verify the thought process.
How deep are we, like?
Uh, just put it at eighty. So cutoff open, small blind call.
Alright, I've, I've been swayed.
Eight, six, three.
I think if we, if we wanna look for slow plays, I think sets are nicer slow plays.
See, I think sets are gonna wanna go bananas too, I don't think, I don't know how much we're gonna be slow playing. I don't know how much we're gonna be slow playing.
Set can't get counterfeit.
So he calls, we call. And now, you get the eight of hearts, yeah. So we play check and he should be polarizing here, so give him that twelve, seven number and let's see how we respond.
What did he bet?
Eleven.
Okay.
So, yeah, I mean. It's, yeah, it's pretty funny, like you are doing some calling. And the sets, look at sets, so sets are like actually more raising.
A little bit, threes, threes is slowing down a little bit.
I didn't even see, yeah, threes, threes is actually quite tame, I, I'm never this tame with threes, I'm going bananas with threes.
Between, it's interesting to me to see that ace eight and ace six aren't really going for it, that's a little surprising to me.
Blocks top two.
I know, but like, like, still, you can get lots of value, yeah, it's interesting that like the slow play region comes from ace eight.
And we don't, we don't find a lot of bluffs here probably either, right? We're only playing basically the shooter range, so we're lacking a lot of combos and stuff and.
Well, so your bluffs have equity, like you're not really just turning stone cold bluffs, you're taking semi bluffs that have like. Like seven, nine, seven, nine with a flush draw is technically a bluff, but. It's doing, it's probably got more equity than a pair of eights by like a, a good bit right here.
Yeah, Jack nine, like Jack seven, you don't have a ton of bluffs, ten, seven.
Uh, yeah, I liked, honestly, I, I do kinda like the raise, I just think, um.
A jam.
Kinda, I like jamming, thinking about it more, cuz if like equity completes, you're in such a nasty spot on the river.
Oh, it does jam, alright.
Yeah, and he's gonna call, he's got probably a lot of draws, he's gotta call, right now.
Said it's too much to jam, but it's not.
It's like three X pot here in this, no?
Well, how deep is this in reality?
Seventy-five big blind effective, but on the twenty, that's eleven and two, it makes twenty-five big blind in the mid, seventy-five behind, no. Those fifty bound, okay, it's two to one. Same thing, nevermind.
I think, um, the balance of a PKO would lean us a tiny bit further towards jamming, right? Like we're.
Yes, I agree, Tim.
Yeah, we're okay with like hitting, you know, showing down like as a slight dog with a, with a draw when we like still, you know, get a whatever thirty percent.
Yeah, man. Half the price pulls on their heads. Like you have to push the equity. Like you have to push, like it's a high variance play style. It's what you signed up for. So I think, I like, I like.
Sometimes we have a set, sometimes we have a draw with thirty percent equity. Like, which one is it?
Yeah, this is a good handle. I like this.
Yeah, cuz also if you guys were saying to do the, the, the thirty raise and then SPR's half, we're just putting it in on any river anyway. They actually get the correct price with any naked flush draw to draw against our raise, if they're always getting the rest on the end. They don't even need a combo draw. But if you jam, then it prices them all out.
I'm not.
There's gonna, yeah.
If I call the turn, I'm not even supposed to stop the river.
I've done these little funky ten percenters. Sometimes they fold too.
But this, this doesn't account for the bounty. I think.
I think, uh.
Actor in the bounty.
Speaking a little bit more on the turn real quick before we go too far, like you were kinda advocating for a call, Danny. Like, why do you? I, I got some ideas about the call. Why do you think you, your natural inclination was to make a call here?
There are a lot of nasty rivers for us, but we. We don't know which ones are the bad ones, so it's better to manage the pot sometimes and keep some strong hands in our call range that can. Like, we're still gonna call any river, pretty much.
Right.
Uh, not an ace, not a three.
You're, you're flirting around the idea that I'm kind of working with here. And I was kinda thinking like along the same lines of what you're saying is like.
Keeps their bluff soon.
Honestly, like, it's hard to think of a card that hits the river that he won't bluff. Like if he, if he's like a well-balanced opponent, this river should be like technically infinite bluffs. Like you can look at the breakdown. I don't know if you have the breakdown of all the rivers, but I don't know how many. Rivers, he's just kinda like shutting down and not bluffing in solver land, which is like.
Lack on the river, so we're always gonna bluff, no?
No, 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 no. I'm just saying, yeah, if we play check call on the turn, kinda what Danny was saying. I think a lot of the EV of calling on the turn comes from an opponent who's gonna be bluffing the river. And there's gonna be a mountain of bluffs to be had on the river. So kinda like what I'm thinking is if they're not finding bluffs on the river. The raise on the turn is infinitely better.
Yeah, I agree with that.
And Danny, it's interesting as I heard you, um, laying out your logic and a piece of it I actually saw from a different side, which is like. If, if we're not gonna know which river cards are good for us.
Sixty percent.
Is gonna, is gonna, you know, polarize the shit out of it and, um, leave us like almost bluff catching with two pair.
Yeah.
We won't know which cards are good for us, um, and like leaving our opponent.
That's the fun.
Polarized range in position is like seems worse for us. Like I want to deny him the ability to polarize on every card in the deck where I'm playing a guessing game on the river.
Hey Louis, just go through all the different cards on the river and let's just compare the jam frequency. So we got sixty point seven on the king. Now like complete the front door flush and let's see what happens. I don't think you, you don't have river. Yeah, you have to do it manually on the river, unfortunately.
So just pick a couple like indicative ones, like a heart, a spade, a low card, a high card.
Yes, exactly. So like, put a. Offsuit, you can do an offsuit low card now.
Wait, this is kind of notable to me that on the brick river where nothing completed, he's still not value betting the, uh.
Hold on before, before you let Danny finish this off before you go, let's.
Oh yeah, he was, he wasn't value betting ace queen even. Like it was only the two pair.
What was the bluff frequency here? Alright, so I'm just saying not necessarily bluff frequency. So like with the king of diamonds, it was sixty percent. This is like forty percent. When the rainbow deuce comes out. Okay, so now like now complete equity. So let's say, let's start with the front door. Uh, way less actually when the front door comes in, but you're still bluffing. Close to forty, a little over forty?
It feels like a lot of spades here and these are spades as well, so.
Yeah, it's pretty, pretty sensible range, I think.
And then like, let's do the back door. Alright, this is another big frequency. So the back door comes in. So like. You can almost pick a random river card and it's gonna be at least forty percent of the range is going all in. Which I think is where like a lot of the EV of a hand likes eight-six had, like gets its EV from. It's just being able to bluff catch half the deck.
The other thing is we are sometimes behind and when we're behind, we're basically dead. Um, so there's some value in not getting fully stacked.
On this turn, Danny, how are you behind?
You are sometimes behind. He can have pocket aces. He can have ace eight suited, like there are combos of hands.
Yeah, yeah. Well, yeah, yeah. You're not, you're not wrong, but it's just, it's a cooler, like.
The big blind is a short stack. He can open a little wider, you know?
Yeah, 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 yeah.
He has six combos of eight, he said off. Yeah, he's got, he's got combos.
In my mind, the double bl- blocker makes it so much likely that he has like ace five, ace ten, his jack, his queen.
Yeah, it's more likely for sure.
That's true.
Yeah, I'm just kind of, I'm just talking from both sides, like making a case for calling and trying to think critically about the calling. Like why, instead of just saying, oh, well, we have two pair on a double flush draw board, so we play calls. I'm trying to understand more of like. Why you wanna play call and if it's feasible in game.
Man, Gailen, you're, you're really right about, like you said, um, you know, we, part of the expected value of calling is branches, the game tree where he's bluffing at us with worse hands.
Yes, it's important.
Like, we're not snapping off that many like big value bets from worse on river, like.
Mm-hmm, that's, I said, that's kinda why I'm like leaning Louis's direction. I think like people are gonna probably. Uh, on some runouts just shut down and not find all the bluffs. So. I just kinda wanna tax their draws, high equity draws and aces. It's easier to play.
So raise unless you're against a maniac who you.
Yes.
Always gonna go for it. Before we leave this, um.
Exactly, Danny.
Before we leave this sim, can we check the ace river and the three river? If we're catching either. They are exactly. We might still call on the ace, but I don't think so.
Yeah, those are complete scam rivers.
So yeah, I know surprise on the ace. He, um, he pops off. That's sixty-three percent.
Alright, yeah, it just feels bad, man.
Just fold. We're, look at that, we're a folding ace-jack.
Wow, yeah. That feels real bad.
Just fold.
I don't know if I have that one in me, boys. Just gonna put it out there.
Jack when you get to the river with trips.
All these jacked, all these deuce.
Yeah, easy game.
I'm just gonna say all the bluff smiths, so I'm, I'm calling. Ace king, good game.
Alright.
That was interesting.
Yeah, that was good. I liked the hand.
Okay, watch out this one.
We can do some.
Call, blah, 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 blah. Get, call gets to me, I squeeze, one call. We get to this flop.
Was he, it's important, I think. Was he closing the action? Was he? Or was he, uh, the one that was in the middle?
He was in.
He was, he was in the middle. Okay, so that should be a little bit stronger of a hand.
Yeah. On the flop?
Not though.
On the flop, I bet one third, seems good, right?
Uh, so this is a brick flop. He's gonna have a hard time. Holding on with like some of his high cards. Now you're kinda blocking high cards. Um.
It's fine.
I don't think it's bad. That's kinda what I'm thinking, Danny. Like I, I'm thinking maybe since you don't have the back door in your pocket, I might go small though. But I might have that backwards, you know, you might be more inclined to go small.
Bigger with, uh.
I think you might have that backwards.
I could definitely have that backwards.
Leaked to bet too often with unpaired hands here, but it doesn't, it doesn't mean that it's bad. It might just be like the frequency needs to be less than a hundred.
In my mind, we bet small here because we get easily called by worst ace six.
Right, sure.
We're, we're going value, we're not looking for full equity. When we size up, it's either for value or for full equity, right? Whereas this one here, I don't think we get a lot of value from sizing up from a size. We just get worse a size to fold when we size up, so doesn't make sense. Size up with this part of my range. But I have a say, bucket nine, bucket ten, bucket seven.
Ten-nine, Jack ten.
Queen, Jack, ma- queen, Jack, maybe. Queen, Jack, King, ten, maybe those make more sense. You should look at it, though, before we just. Draw too many assumptions about it. I, 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 you are swaying me. I do kind of agree. Ace king is probably protected enough on a board this dry. I just know on these dry boards, we do bring some gas to the fire sometimes. Like, cause he's got nothing here. Like he's gonna have like a set of eight sometimes and like vulnerable over pairs.
You're talking about his king high and a backdoor flush draw. He's got the nuts.
Uh, exactly, Tim, exactly. So we do bring a little gas to the fire here. It's actually quite big. Uh.
Never going small with ace king.
And just, just to kinda verify, look at the ones real quick. Does it like bigger with the non-backdoor? It's indifferent. It, well, a little bit. Uh, well, is it? I don't know. I can't tell. It seems to be the same as the spades.
The diamond is the one that bets the least, has relation with the.
Yeah, 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 yeah. So I mean, there are, it, it's pretty polar to be honest, like checking. To manage the pot makes sense and then it does bring like some larger sizing.
So how can we, um, how can we internalize this? The way I'm trying to think of it is that like. We think of eight-five deuce in a single raise pot is like, oh, you know, it has some interactivity. There's some draws, blah, blah, blah. But an early. Position razor and caller of a three bet just has nothing, right? Like stuff with no interaction, like queen ten has no real connection to anything.
Yeah, well, this is a nothing burger flop for, for like a squeeze spot for.
Three bet, exactly, yeah.
For an EP caller. Like also the guy's calling when he's not closing the pot. So like, he's vulnerable to back, back raises from like tens, jacks, ace, queen suited in that portion of the range. So like. The portion he should be calling here with is going to be, um, should be pretty strong, I would think. Uh, that being said, though, it's like, what are you gonna do with aces and kings that you're blocking? Like, are you gonna just bet small on a board like this?
I mean, the answer is yes, but that's a mistake. So like when I'm looking at this flop, I should look at it and see. See almost like more like deuce, deuce, deuce. Like just, he never has it. He never has the interactivity with this board. All of his hands are either over pairs or over cards, basically.
Well, so like there's two ki- there's a couple of different kinda boards that we polarize. And it's the ones where they have a lot of equity, but none completed. That you need to bet larger to kind of get folds from some of the more marginal continues that aren't indifferent from a small bet. Which is not this.
Right?
Yeah, Jack ten deuce, uh, seven, eight, four, two tones, stuff like that. The other one that we bet large with is these, and I haven't really internalized a good kind of like dialogue to kinda remember it. But it's just really bricky flops where they don't have much.
Oh, I do. I think of it as deuce, deuce, deuce.
Deuce, deuce, deuce is a good way to do it, like.
Yeah, cuz then like you, you're like, look, I have aces and you don't. I'm betting big. You wanna, you wanna play a guessing game?
Yeah, it's kind of a game of chicken, I guess. It's a toy game. Yeah, if you can break it down to a toy game of like, we have all of the nuts, you don't have all the nuts, call my big bet.
Yep. Yes, it's the ace king, king, ace, king, queen game, basically.
Alright, so I bet small, but I should bet fifteen and two thirty.
Yes.
Here even more so.
Hey, do you barrel this turn on this kind of scenario?
Uh, I'm not a fan of the eight, man. Like, okay, so like, does he have eight? I have to start counting, like how many eights does this guy have in range? And like ace eight is gonna be a threat. King eight probably shouldn't be in there. Seven, eight, maybe cuz you're deeps. Eight, nine, maybe because you're deep.
Exactly. Yeah, I would, I would range him similarly. I would expect like some possibility of seven, eight, and nine, eight, and ace eight.
And then the other part about it is. I, I try to put myself in their shoes and this is like, this is not necessarily a solver thing, but it's more a psychological thing. If I bet here. He's gonna think like, how many eights does this guy have? And he may get a little out of line. So like if you're double barreling a card that he, that you might perceive that he perceives you don't have a lot of in your range, he may play back at you at higher frequencies. Um.
So, yeah. That's, that's a fair point about the psychology, whereas in reality, it's a bit more of like an irrelevant card, like a bit more of a brick than that. But I think you're right that people may really, really focus on it.
Mm-hmm. I think the Brazilians do from the blinds and the, and the Russians, the, the. If you, if you, if you double barrel, uh, a second card, like the second pair, when it pairs on the turn, you're getting check raised. They just. You're getting check raised, like they, it doesn't matter what their hand is.
Uh, I didn't think we were gonna double barrel very much with ace king here. I was wrong.
Alright, so like double barreling here, the reasons I think you, alright, so a case for double barreling, his continues are gonna be like. Low, high car, like low over cards with backdoor flushes. So like. He might have some nine, ten of diamonds, some king, not, maybe some queen, jack of hearts, things like that, that are gonna have to continue. Versus small bet, so. If you bet small, I like a double barrel a lot more than if you bet large. I would be kind of scared.
Okay, so I check. Oh, look at this. When I check this turn, he's supposed to be very happy on the pedal.
Yeah, he's just targeting like your overcards at this point that have like no equity, like the king ten. Your, your king ten of spades is gonna have a hard time holding on here.
Yeah, so check, check on the turn. And what was it? Six, four of hearts?
Yeah, it's just a, like a nothing burger. Doesn't really do anything for this, this kind of a hand. And now like you're just going, you're just going kinda crazy on the river.
So, yeah, Louis, you're right that even in theory, your hand is a, is a bluff catcher. So that's, that's a good spot.
Mm-hmm.
Doesn't seem to be calling very much from my perspective.
No, but you know, it's a big bet too. Uh, yeah, I don't know, man. I got, honestly, I played a hand very similar to this yesterday. In the morning and got, I got snapped off by ace king for a pot a little bit larger than this, so.
Okay, so I went.
You had a read, you know?
Cause I thought I had to call. When I three bet and C bet. Uh, and then turn goes check, check. I think here, like if he has, like, I don't know, ace, jack, ace, ten, ace, queen, ace, seven. King, six suited. No, whatever he decided to go with.
Some of them. I, I honestly, I, I, uh.
Like I wouldn't call with ace queen here. Wouldn't call with ace jack, but ace king, I think I need to call and I'm wrong.
So let me ask you this. Do you think boss sixty-four is finding a big bet with like pocket nines here?
Yes.
On that river, you think he's finding like a new trigger?
I don't think he makes it to the, I think on pocket nine, he's blasting me out of the turn.
I was gonna say the exact same thing. I think it's so hard.
He's all in by the river with pocket nine every time.
So what is his, what, when he plays check, check here, like what, what is he representing?
Nothing burger.
Well, what, Alver will have some good hands that maybe he's deficient in, which is why you wanted to call, right?
I mean, I have a couple of hands that make sense. Like what, what gets there? Um, I think pocket fours is reasonable.
Ace three.
I think ace three's reasonable. Seven, six, I would expect to bluff a lot before it gets to river, but it's not crazy to call one small and then on turn be like, well, I have eight outs, like, let's see.
Seven, seven, six is gonna be tough just because he may not defend it, but yeah, I would agree.
But it's not the craziest thing that he could end up there. Like it's not like, it's not like, you know, I'm also gonna be checking back my, my open industry draw on the turn there.
Mm-hmm.
I figure my pair outs are often live as well. I don't really need to bluff with the hand with so much equity. I'll bluff in the trash here.
I mean, this hand's not really even in his range, right?
It shouldn't be. I don't think versus.
Then he's gonna be over bluffing.
Yeah. Yeah, he has, uh, yeah.
I think you nailed it here, Louis. Like I think you have to really rely on your tagging system, like if you play a lot online. And if they've got the green tag, in my case, or the red tag in your case, I think you just close your eyes and call here.
With ace king, right? And not a.
Yes, not ace. I don't know, man. Even ace queen makes some sense because he didn't raise you back on pre-flop, right? Like, he, I think ace, king and ace queen are effectively the same hand. Maybe like. I wouldn't do it with ace jack, cuz he should have.
Yeah.
So like if he's this flashy.
Up there, king high.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, it does.
Flashy and capable finding bluffs, but he knows he can't win. Flashy and capable finding bluffs, but he knows he can't win otherwise, then, yeah, you gotta call him wider.
Yeah, I think he actually played the sand fine. He should have bet turn. Well, he should have folded pre and he should have bet turn probably, but like. It's a good combo to float flop for sure and it.
I think it's a better check raise on the flop. Like, it's not, I don't think it's really good enough to defend.
In position.
He honestly, like. He, he left himself like not too many options. He put himself in a weird part of the tree where Louis is gonna be bluff catching a lot, just because he doesn't play a ton of value this way is, is, is the issue.
That king, jack, king ten, even those just don't wanna. By guessing game here. He just needs to be much more respectful. Like, you just have aces sometimes, like, right? So, what's, what's he doing?
Yeah, like honestly, if. It's not the craziest thing, like, but he should have probably bet the turn. He should have put, bet the turn and he should have committed on the river.
Yeah.
Yeah, and like I would much rather be in this pot in his shoes with that seven, six suited, you know, that has a more robust draw. Where the pair outs are not dominated, like he's in here and he's like, he's gotta think that his king is not live. Portion of the time, you know?
All I can say is he definitely earned that red tag and I would be leaning on that in the future.
Just gonna throw that out there.
Have you done so?
I just did.
How much is he down?
Graph looks like the Mariana Trench, man. Uh, down seven point three K, average ROI minus thirty-seven percent.
Yeah, so you know, like. He, he's defending too wide and he's not, and he's picking a, a weird spot to bluff here. And a, a player that's not like asleep, like you, you're pretty heads up. You recognize the turn is super low frequency, so you bluff caught him. Which I think a good player is gonna do a lot.
There's like, I think a different, like a better line from him would have been, um, when that eight pairs and you check it, like, let's go. Heck, you don't have an eight. You gotta be a little scared that he has. Get on it.
And to be honest, I, like, if you really wanted to play this hand. Above all of that, why not just four bet this pre-flop if you really feel like you need to play king six? Like, I would be.
Blind squeeze, it's a little. A little dicey.
Well, I, I mean, calling it period and trying to like bluff this rivers dicey. I feel like the success rate pre-flop is gonna be way higher than this river bluff.
Checks the turn. I think Louis often does have some hands that are like a little, you know, wary, not excited about calling down. I think Louis plays that spot pretty honestly, like most people do. I'm not criticizing your game, but like, I think you're playing honestly, that you don't love that card and that's like a great spot for him to attack.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Interesting hand, interesting hand.
So that's what I have for today. Uh, another thing I wanted to look at, um. One of you guys with HRC. A pre-flop scenario. Where somebody opens four and a half six, somebody calls and we're in the big line. And how does that? How are, does our range change when we're facing bigger than usual race sizes pre-flop?
Alright, well, there's a couple of things that we have to address first and it gets into kind of the guessing game. If you pick a bigger sizing pre-flop, their range construction shifts. So, do you think that they're tightening their range accordingly to represent a four and a half big blind raise?
Yes.
Is the fir-? Do you? How, how do you, how do they know what that range looks like?
No way, no way.
I'm, I, I'm with Tim, honestly, like, I think they probably look at a forty big blind. Chart that has two X raises and they just apply a four point five big blind. It seems more logical, but why, why would you think?
My, I'll, I'll give you my impression. My impression is that. They'll go like. Linear when they do that. Straight up face up linear. It's like when you're on the final table and somebody suddenly goes three point five. Somebody who never did that just suddenly does it. Doesn't know how to play it.
Yeah, no, he just has, he has good hands.
Timeline when they do that, they are very linear.
Yeah, that's a specific scenario, like the final table thing. But alright, so we just wanna look at like a chippy V scenario, equal stacks.
Yes.
And some guy opening big. How deep do you want it to be?
Forty big blinds.
Okay, so forty big blinds.
Five X open and then one caller.
I'll give you the spoiler alert. You're gonna fold a lot. You're gonna have a narrow call range and you're gonna rejam some.
Yeah.
Famously enough, I have a hand in the, um, in the MTT hand review channel that I was about to ask to go over and it's, um, kind of this.
Alright, so five big blinds. Um, we, I'm not gonna adjust the, I guess we should probably adjust this. Now, we'll just leave that normal. We'll make it like the guys opening from the field big. Um, three bits, we're not gonna really adjust. And yeah, so we'll look at this. And the important part is going to be to. Compare some of this to like what a forty big blind RFI range should look like in theory. So, um, first off, let's. Make sure the range looks nice. And this is what, uh, okay, so like. Under the gun, eight max, five big blinds. This is what an opening range looks like forty effective. Compared to like, we're gonna have to look at EP one, cuz these are nine-handed charts. So you can compare. Alright, so we're opening about half as frequently with the sizing, eight point three percent of the range compared to seventeen point four. So like, you're not doing this with nines, you're not doing this with eights, queen tens out of there.
This, in my mind, is really, really similar to what they're up to. A little bit less king for suited. But in my mind, this is really what they're up to.
Yeah, I wouldn't pay him much.
Even stronger than this, the average player, but yeah, I mean, it's good hands.
Or the original razor and then the first caller. Might be a little wider than the solution.
Yeah, yeah, they're gonna, the caller is gonna be way weaker than the solution.
Depending on what we see.
In theory land, the flat call needs to be really strong.
I'm sorry, I may have run this incorrectly. So we want one flat call and then what?
Then we wanna see our range from the small line and the big line and the button.
Alright, so let's say under the gun, let's say under the gun opens, we get a call from middle position. So like, they're pretty strong.
What is gonna have to be wider than that?
They're pretty strong here.
Yeah, but it's not gonna be that strong.
And then you wanna look at what from the, what from EP or from like the.
Can we did this range from MP?
As soon as we look at this, we'll do edits next and you wanna look at what?
That's my call range for.
The big blind, small blind and button. Big blind.
Okay.
They have a dark theme though, node now, uh, theme in Galen, if you wanna try it.
You know me, I'm on the dark side, Ken. How do I get it?
Uh, you gotta go on a website and download it in beta.
I will go get it. Thank you for that. So, um, to your response, this is what you're squeezing. Um, the squeezing is a bit more aggressive than the calling.
Yeah, but let's say did their calling range a little bit, though.
Alright, so what I'm gonna do is. How do I wanna do this? Do we wanna keep the untainted version before we start playing too much?
No, cuz I don't think they play, they call like that.
Alright.
Cuz it's like, we're gonna do it with one, but in reality, it's one or two players that are gonna call. Right? And they're gonna call like super wide.
You're trying to simulate a, a cash game, a, a shit red cash game, no?
Live tournament spot, maybe?
No, I, no, I didn't, Ken, but we can. I can allow for overcalling. I can make it where it goes open, call, call, call.
Yeah.
If you want.
That might expand the ranges naturally.
Uh, I'm getting a phone call, one sec.
Gonna take a bit longer to run. I would do the first bucket at like two fifty-six.
Yeah, you're probably right. Uh, so you're saying this, two fifty-six?
Yeah.
And we go down here, we're gonna make cold calls available and we're gonna make, oh, we wanna make it what? You want three calls? Um, it's kind of. Two for now, yeah, three's kind of big. Two, still, still pretty big. It's the cold call thing, but. Um, and you wanna see how we're supposed to respond to something like this?
Yes.
I think I actually ran something like this with, uh, the, I don't remember his name, but the Australian kid that was in the group for a while.
You're just gonna play jam. If you have two calls, four and a half X and two calls, you're just gonna play jam, I think, with like the uber nuts.
Forty big blinds, you just jam, you don't have a calling range from the big blind?
We're gonna let it, uh, we're gonna let it go for a second.
Dude, there's twelve out there. Thirteen and a fourteen, fif- there's fifteen out there.
Need to did this black hole.
Yeah, we'll make her, we'll make him fishy, don't worry. There, is this, is that what you want? Alright, so big blind, three bet range. Alright, yeah, we gotta let it run down a little bit. It's acting pretty silly right now.
So yeah, it's about to be the WSOP season for duly, right? And there's a lot of live games going on everywhere right now. So when we play live, people are gonna have four X open from EP, five X open from EP, then. I guess like have somebody call. And then it's tough to figure out ranges from big blind and small blind.
So this like, um.
Like, do you defend all pairs facing five X? And then, uh, a call from the small blind. Are you gonna defend like deuces? Probably not, right?
I gotta remove this cold call, man. Like, sometimes when I hit this cold call button, it goes fucking crazy.
Here's one from the other night where I knew there was this woman who's a little bit tight and she's three X-ing all the way until the bubble off of like thirty big blind stacks. So I'm like, okay, you know, that's a.
Kind of a similar spot, right?
That's a weird spot. And, um, so, you know, I'm like, I'm definitely decided that I'm gonna, you know, play back at her with good hands, not with, you know, garbage. And I get a spot where I rejam for like, I don't know, twenty, twenty-five bigs, I rejam jacks on her. She calls it off. With only a little bit more than me with deuces.
Yeah.
So like, they have good ranges, but also like not. Always the exact range you're expecting. So like, I don't think she's raising enough, like king eight suited there. But then raise calling off with deuces.
Exactly, I'm, I'm with you on that.
Alright, so MP.
They raised two linear.
Actually, I have a quick hand. I can take the screen and show it.
Go ahead. It's gonna, I'm gonna, this is gonna be a minute, cuz we have like, we got some interesting inputs. And I gotta make sure they make sense before we start prescribing anything.
Can you give up the screen?
Yeah, 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 yeah. Where do I do that? Did you steal it from me? Stop share.
Alright. Alright, this is a quick one. Um, so we're only a few hands into a live hundred and fifty euro tournament, playing it, cuz there's a huge overlay, so free money, that's cool.
Fish on a heater.
Yeah, he, he real fish on me here. He's got like five starting stacks and it's early on. I just sat down, but you know, they haven't even been playing long and I'm like. Where, who'd you go these chips from?
You shove, you crazy.
I, well, I mean, look, look at this. I'm sitting on forty big blinds. He blind raises six big blinds. This is definitely blind. He had the chips out there before he had cards. It's not an angle, it's not a whatever, it's, it's blind raise.
Yeah, but.
Two people call, like, wh- wh- like, what hands do they have, you know? And like, I think a lot of the times I just get it through. As it turns out, the blind raise guy has ace ten off, but that's just absolute luck, you know, like he could have eight deuce off.
So what did you shove?
Oh, sorry, I, I shoved king queen off.
King, queen off, you shove. And you're in the small blind versus under the gun, call, call.
Except under the gun, under the gun is blind. So it's kind of like limp, limp, but it's limp against a big size. Right?
The very similar, right? What are you supposed to do with your range?
To be honest, I, I like what you're. I like what you're doing here. I just don't know if king, queen off is quite strong enough. It probably is.
Never doing it with king queen.
King, queen suited, I'm snap doing this. I'm doing exactly what you did. If I see a guy just grab a, a few chips and throw them in and it's like an arbitrary amount, like six big blinds. It's old, well, okay, old guy and an Asian kid, a bunch of callers. You think they're, you think they're calling ace, king there? You think they're calling aces there?
Well, that's the thing, exactly. I just figure I'm just live and I mean, as it works out, I, I lose the hand, but. You know, I get it in fine, you know, like it sucks to have two good hands, but like, I think sometimes, sometimes you get two folds and you take down a pot of. It's twenty big blinds.
Like suited jacks, right? But not.
suited jacks. I was thinking about suited tens.
Cuz you block EP, EP.
Well, there's no such thing as blocking EP cuz EP doesn't have a range. EP has one hundred percent of hands.
Yeah, but the other two are kind of.
Okay.
I'm gonna call a lot of suited tens figuring that the big blind's not gonna squeeze, like, I'm just trying to smash a flop or fold.
I'm pretty sure here, Tim, your queen is gonna be resilient. Queen is not great.
Alright, these ranges are kind of goofy, so we gotta edit them real quick. So let me share real quick.
How about pairs? I was thinking about, um, sixes.
That's why I wanna figure out then. What do we start pairs from the small blind? What do we?
You're talking against like sort of, like real ranges, balanced ranges, like this is just, you know, like garbage ranges.
Well, does, does, does the guy who's calling in the low jack with pocket eights fold versus jam?
Apparently not. No, I mean, call me off.
Well, then I like, I like choosing polar combos a lot less. I like to just. Construct way more linearly if they're just, if they don't, if they, they don't have a fold range, man, like I'm just gonna be. I'm gonna be top heavy. I like jamming nines better than sixes.
I mean, if anything, our call range, our call range should be like aces and some speculative stuff, if anything. Um, no, yeah, we should just definitely be jamming linear, like figure out what's good enough and then, and then we go with it. And I think like. I don't wanna call a single hand when there's twenty big blinds in the pot and I have forty, you know, like, I have no desire to basically call any hands.
Alright, so we're getting a weird response here, so you gotta just help me narrow down these ranges. So like, what do you want the? We gotta clean up these ranges to get the clean response from the big blind. So what do you want this to be?
Right click it and then. So more suited tens, less kings.
What about the?
Yeah, probably maybe nines, eights, sevens for sure.
Okay.
Ten, nine, two, maybe, yeah, these two maybe. That's it.
Ace ten, I think he's opening?
Yeah.
Alright, I'm just gonna clean it up, make him a hundred percent. Like, I don't wanna do fractional combos, cuz it's gonna make the solution kind of goofy. Alright, what do you think bro is calling with? And do you think he's raising at all?
Uh, yeah, for sure.
Okay, so let's start with the call range.
So suited tens. All bears probably.
Okay, yeah, I, I like the, the wider notion.
Maybe a couple of suited connectors, ten, nine, two, seven, six suited.
Okay.
Um, ace, jack, ace, ten, maybe. No ace, king, no aces.
Alright, what about ace queens?
Uh, ace queen, yeah.
These are calls or these are raises?
Calls, no jacks. Think that's what they do.
What about this? What about these combos?
All, all of them, yeah.
I think queen also probably in there if he's calling ace ten off.
Maybe some jacks.
Queen jack suited, you can put it as well, queen jack suited.
Queen, jack suited. Yeah, I, I just don't wanna mix the combos because the solution. This deep in the tree is gonna get really goofy if we don't have like full frequency combos.
Think happens. I don't know, I'm not sure, probably.
I, I think this is reasonable, like this is a guy from middle position, so there's a lot behind, like the fishy guy.
Given a four is five suited to a deuce maybe.
Something like that.
Yeah.
Okay, so he's calling those and how do you think he's splitting jam? Does he jam or is he just raising?
Uh, whatever, listen.
Machine will figure that, those combos out, it'll parse that.
Yeah.
Alright.
When you hit reset.
What are we doing with the cutoff overcalling range?
Uh, we don't need him yet.
You don't want this guy?
Not yet, we're gonna look later.
Alright, and.
How do we defend?
I gotta run it real quick. So let's see how this kind of cleans up. This should clean it up a pretty good bit since we have these two locked. It's still, see, it's still doing this. This is why I wanted to lock these, because now it's like. Since we didn't lock the raise and the jam, it's saying there's equity in this combo, there's equity in that combo, that one, that one, that one. And then it's gonna get dirty down here. It's gonna clean it up some because we cleaned it up a lot, but you're still gonna have weird, weird shit in here. That's not gonna make a hundred percent sense. So like, we go here, well, we don't need to lock that because we lock that.
Most of that would go away, but you don't wanna run it that long, right?
Well, that, well, that, yeah, honestly, that's kind of it, Ken. Like, it, it will converge, it's just, it'll converge in an hour.
This is not the same player.
Yeah, it is. Uh, no, you're right, sorry. Uh.
Lower. Lower, 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 lower. You got MP three bet, a whole bunch lower.
You're right, you're right, you're, you're right, here, here, sorry. You're right, you're right, you're right, you're here, sorry. So um, what do we want for this not all in raise range?
Not hmm, just linear.
So our options are these.
Queens, jacks.
Queens, jacks. These are all not all in. Is he, does he have a jamming range that we're concerned with? Alright, so we can lock jamming range to zero, so we'll make this not all in then. And he's just gonna fold the rest. So this looks okay. And then MP jam, we're gonna edit range, set it to zero. He's just not jamming. So this is bro's range right here. That's all he's doing.
Let's see how we do against the 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 guy who's five X and then the bro.
Alright, so big blind call range slash jam range. This will clean up.
Great. I'll go refill my cup.
Oh wait, so call, I need to look at this one actually. Yeah, so like some of the stuff we can ignore. It's gonna clean up, but the value in pair seems to be pretty robust. Like verse, verse these big raises. Um, seems to be pretty good to try to get him with a pair.
Is this Tim's hand we're trying to look at?
Not necessarily. It's just a question Louis had about a guy who's opening five X and a guy who's flattening middle position. It's kind of like a uh, I guess a live tournament simulation.
So then you gotta look at at that solution, then you gotta look at their calling and when they call too wide solution.
Well, yeah, and I mean, that that's kind of what this is. That's what this is. This is like. What's up? No, I was just saying that's what this is. This is like infinitely wider, like the actual call range is this. Like, mind you, I haven't, I haven't run this down really. So it's like some version of this. This is like.
Facing the blind squeeze, the big blind or small blind?
Um, no, so this is middle position facing a five X open from under the gun, unadjusted. Like, this is what HRC says you should be roughly calling. Mind you, I didn't run this down very far, so it's gonna be plus or minus a combo or two here. Now, we locked it to this, which is simulating more of a live fishy overcaller, right? And then we're kind of analyzing what this is.
Right, that's my point. So now we're gonna look to see what we wanna be raising here, right?
Well, yeah, just to see like where the, what's worth calling and what's worth raising. The one thing that's standing out to me is like, pairs are very resilient here. Like, if you're in the big blind.
So my next point was, after we get this, our raising range, we have to look at, see, okay, so we see what it can be, but then you gotta go back and say, alright, what if these fishy players are overcalling stuff like that showed up?
We'll add one player first.
Yeah, 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 yeah. You wanted to see how like, every time we have an overcaller, how this is gonna affect this? I think is what you're trying to say, right?
Me?
Yeah.
No.
Okay.
What I'm trying to say is, so you got this guy opening five bigs or whatever, then you got this guy overcalling this wider range, right? And then we get to us, wherever we wanna squeeze, right? So we squeeze. We see what they're supposed to fall, but then I think you gotta, you may wanna have to expand that range and then they go back and see how that changes your squeeze range. If they're not folding a lot of those pairs, they're supposed to fold. Change, right?
Yeah, but Ken, hang on, I'm not much interested in the squeezing range.
I'm just gonna take a peek. It's not gonna hurt anything. So like, we only have forty right now, by the way. I didn't add an all, not all in sizing and it it makes sense because they're so big. But if it goes back to under the gun.
We'll be more linear. I mean, we know the answer, right? You're gonna get rid of at least a lot of crap and just be more linear.
It's not showing these. It's doing this flop average thing, and I think it's just because I didn't give it all the inputs to look this deep. So the world may never know. Unless I give it more capabilities. So this is, this is gonna be pretty close to it, Louis. Like, you got a kind of a hard line developing here at like the suited broadways. And your pairs are very resilient. And it seems to wanna work in like a suited connector or two every once in a while.
I don't know, suited connectors from what I see now are shrinking.
Well, yeah, they're, they're not too popular for sure.
It's it's very surprising how tight we have to be here.
It's linear, completely linear construction. Yeah, I mean, there's a big jump between king jack here, which is losing six chips from calling to like, the four chips you're making here. Ace jack off is completely unhappy, like this'll, this'll probably converge even tighter. So it's like, it's gonna be completely indifferent. And then like, I I don't know, this stuff, probably ignore some of this. It's trying to balance bluffs and stuff. Like folding is the best, best option here from a EV perspective. It's turning it into a bluff sometimes. This stuff will probably converge.
Okay, you mind letting it run for a little while?
Yeah, it's not too far off. It's at twenty-nine. It's just gotta run down to ten. CI, whatever that is.
Did you think it was gonna be that high?
What, this range? Um. Yeah, I don't know. Yeah, I'm not sure.
My squeezing range is extremely similar to this, right? I was, I would squeeze to the dance for sure.
But yeah, which is pretty good.
Pocket nine, pocket eight, I would just call.
Yeah, they're gonna be good enough, it looks like.
And then I would call more suited nines, more suited aces.
Yeah, the this uh. To give you an idea, um, jamming pocket eights is twice as good as calling pocket eights here. So it's like, it's not really close. Jamming pocket nines is like, jamming pocket nines is freaking printing.
See, I was exactly in that spot with pocket nine, and I'm pretty sure I just called.
Pocket nines is making fi- over fifty chips when you jam compared to the sixteen and a half that you make calling.
So there, there we go.
So either the uh, what am I trying to say? I don't know. The range that you gave us isn't actually how you accurately arrange them in game or or what? Like, why would you not slam it in there if you think they're playing every pair and all this suited garbage and there's like fifteen dead out there?
Cause I'm against CP and I don't wanna jam lines for forty big blind.
Yeah, fair. I think it's exactly what Peter said. I think the fact that they're choosing like such an unoptimal, unoptimized opening size leaves like some pretty attractive uh risk reward um, profile. It's a pretty attractive risk reward profile to jam a little bit wider.
Click on the calling range. Looks like he's losing money, is he not?
Oh, yeah, dude, this guy's, this guy's punting. Yeah, like the call here is losing seventeen chips. Calling sixes is losing eighteen chips. Calling seven, six is losing twenty chips. I just, there's like a not very good options for like a lot of this trash that this middle position guy's calling.
So show me again what MP should be doing in an optimal scenario.
MP optimally is gonna be close to this.
So he's folding suited tens, folding suited jacks.
This is pixelated, so like, um, I didn't really run this down, but you could assume that tens is probably gonna be okay. Nines is not gonna be okay. These, anything below here is not gonna be okay. And ace queen is gonna be like break even.
Ace ten suited would be a fold.
Yes, probably. If it's not a fold, it's gonna be like completely break even.
I'm really surprised, King ten suited folding.
Yeah, this is also, I mean, this is MP, like, and it's first a huge raise size. So this isn't the craziest thing I've seen. Aces are just calling. Kings wanna raise. So back to, yeah, this is gonna be pretty close to what you're doing here, Louis. You're very incentivized to jam.
I see you're expanding now suited connectors.
Yeah, they, yeah, they're, they're starting to kind of come in here. That means like all of these suited connectors that are unblocking like this part of the range, that are unblocking this part of the range. Like, they're just, they're too asymmetrically top heavy is the thing. So like, there's gonna be some like middling and low textures that you can see from the big blind that you're just gonna be able to dominate. Like ten high boards, seven high boards, this stuff, you're just gonna be able to kind of steamroll because they don't have anything.
So we could expand up to two jappers in the upper area. Not suited nines, though. It doesn't like suited nines.
Suited nines are, I mean, just given these ranges, like we didn't even look at the cutoff to high jack. I don't really know what those ranges look like. But um so like, you're, you're kind of blocking the floor of this opening range with the nines. So let's say this guy calls. Middle position calls, the the cutoff calling range doesn't really have nines. It does a lot of jamming. The button calling range doesn't really have nines. It has a lot of jamming. Small blind, nothing really. But yeah, this thing's pretty much uh converged. Like, it's gonna be close enough. So you, we were looking at the small blind, right?
I wanna see small blind and mid blind. So we have.
This is a small blind range. So the EV of calling these small pairs is kind of out. You basically are pretty much playing push fold. That's it. And it's the same hands that you kind of, you kind of are thinking.
Okay, so bucket eight and suited, suited jack, no calling at all with sevens. And this is shocking to me.
Seven, sixes, five, yeah, I mean, all this stuff is kind of like.
Bucket deuce seems to be never losing.
Pocket deuce is losing two and a half to six, six chips. If we go to the big blind range, here you go. So like the EV of kind of continuing with some of these suddy connector things and little pairs is there. There's a little more calling, but not a ton.
You didn't won the hundred K.
Who did? Oh, did he? Good for Jason.
Just send it. Happen to pop it on for a second while we were going through this crap.
So you wanna, you wanna expand another calling range? What do you wanna do?
Add the button. No, first show the button strategy.
Just a lot of jamming, not really calling.
Okay.
Optimally, so if we wanna lock the button. Um, let's start by removing their jams. What do we want them to jam?
Aces is uh down to jacks.
Aces, kings, queens, jacks, ace kings. Seems good. And the button is calling. Edit range, how wide?
Um, suited tens, suited nines maybe. And then all the suited aces.
Pairs?
Yeah, all pairs.
Uh, offsuit Broadway?
Hmm, yeah. All of them.
Alright, we'll make him super fish. What about ace ten?
Suited, suited kings, yeah, that's it.
Okay, this seems I I, this could make some sense, I think.
Well, I I hang on, just add in a few suited connectors because that guy has to be playing suited connectors.
Okay. Bad then. Okay, so this is locked. So now we'll, we'll give it one more spin and see how this affects everything. So now we got two locked ranges. So we got a raise, we got a call, and we want this guy to be in the call node. And then we wanna look at what we're doing from the big blind. And it looks crazy again, but it's gonna clean up. I would be kind of surprised if it looks too much different than the other one, to be honest. You might be getting a better price with some of the suited connectors, to be hon- maybe, maybe that's gonna be the difference.
We just lost equally enough.
Yeah, I wouldn't read too much into this unless it's like almost full, like you can be sure eights and sevens are probably gonna be in here.
Show me the three blinds, uh, small, uh, the small blind three bet range.
It's cleaning up, but.
Okay, yeah, no, it's not too crazy.
Yeah, it's not, not too crazy.
Going for a solution, yeah.
This seems like it's gonna be in the same ballpark. Like, it looks like maybe the EV of continuing with some of these suited kings and aces is a little bit better.
With one more caller?
With one more caller. Given these inputs, I don't know, man, the more, that's, that's the thing about HRC, the more complex you make the tree.
I know.
The more like, you have to slim things down as far as like how many flop sets it's running, like the outputs get kind of iffy. Like, I think this one's gonna be alright, though. Unless you sit there and let it run like all day. It's cleaning up pretty good.
Shrink the lot. But you see now some low suited kings, suited aces.
Yeah, honestly, these, these look like they're gonna be a little more resilient. Like, there's kind of a clear definition here. So maybe, maybe like, they're not too bad. I don't know, these are kind of breaking up a little bit. These are kind of converging how they were before. They're like break even. And if I remember correctly, it drew the line at sevens. The one big difference here is it looks like your suited tens are kind of indifferent now. Before, they were just jamming with one caller. Now that you have two callers, it looks like they're, they're just folding or calling. Like, you're, you're a little more behaved with your suited broadways when there's this much. And I honestly, I think it's because like, when you jam here, they're getting better pot odds to call off, so I I think you're probably just supposed to be a, a little more wary.
Hmm, this is very interesting to me. How would you approach like big raise sizes? Are you folding like it's five suited?
Yeah, I'm, I, I, if I'm facing big raise sizes.
From the big blind.
I'm just gonna play very, very linear. I'm gonna remove all my polar components. And I, I'm gonna try to not go post flop five ways. Though, the hands, the hands I am gonna go post flop with are little pairs, though. And I'm not gonna lie, like the five, six suiteds of the world, I would still be pretty tempted.
Yeah, right.
I would be pretty, I know, I know, I know, it's probably bad, Danny. I would be tempted, though, just because I'm gonna assume that their calling ranges are gonna be so top heavy and then the PLO card removal effect starts coming in my mind and I'm like, it's just low flops. But, uh, yeah, maybe not. But definitely fives, like, I feel like fives are just the nuts here in like a five-way pot.
If you hit the five, it sure is.
Yeah, you, you got everything.
As we see.
Seven, five.
Yeah, it's, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Lose set over set.
You can kind of still call pairs, right? From the big blind.
Yeah, yeah.
Show us the strategy from the small blind.
Um, it's gonna be very jam heavy, I would guess. Yeah, you don't call anything now from the small blind. It's completely removed and, um, seems to be pretty indifferent here, close to sevens.
So seven, let go.
Yeah, there's an equity drop off. So you're making fifty chips almost jamming eights. You're making five chips jamming seven. So big difference there.
Yeah.
And it's because of how we built their ranges. Uh, we didn't give them a lot of sevens, but they do have some eight X.
How does ace jack off feel?
One point seven eight chips. It's like.
Yes, okay.
It's like, it's, it's, ace jack off is worthless.
You don't wanna squeeze, squeeze too much?
Ace jack suited is worth eighteen, nineteen chips.
I believe I would have squeezed king queen and ace jack.
King queen is, king queen's actually losing chips here. Like we, it's not good. It's, it's losing like five chips right now. The suited one is making twenty one chips.
You'd way rather have a pair.
Uh, yes. Nines is making over a hundred chips. Eights is making fifty chips. Fives is making, is losing three chips, so sevens is making five chips now. Yeah, these middling pairs seem to be like the nuts here compared to like, uh, like suited connectors or something. And then obviously like your best pairs are just printing. Ace king off. Ace king off and ace king suited are worth roughly the same. Like ace king suited is making ten more chips, which is not really much. It's like a hundred and thirteen versus a hundred and three. So pocket eights, pocket nines is as valuable as ace king suited. To kind of put it in perspective with this arrangement. Pocket eights is twice as valuable as king queen suited.
So our response is basically to play eight percent of the range.
Yeah, pretty tight from the small blind.
Sixteen from the small blind.
Uh, it's only eight from the small blind. From the big blind though, you're playing like fourteen or fifteen, probably less when you start removing some of these fractional things. It's probably closer to ten.
Hey, well now suited aces are. How is it not defending with queen jack suited on the big blind?
Just, it's got dog shit card removal and it doesn't really want to call.
Yeah.
Like the times you make a jack or a queen, you're gonna have to stack off and I think you just lose more than you win.
Yeah.
Because you're calling, there's already, there's gonna be over twenty chips in the middle. And you've only got thirty five behind, thirty four behind at this point. So like pot odds would just kind of dictate like you're supposed to be stacking off with top pairs pretty, pretty frequently. And I, I feel like a pair of queens or pair of jacks, you're just gonna lose more than you're gonna win.
Well, you know what? That makes it very easy, actually. Very, very, because when you face such a size, you just tighten up to the max.
You played the nuts. Yeah.
And then you squeeze only. Right?
Only.
Yep. You can kind of play small bears if you're a fish.
Yeah, like you can, you can just try to, uh, you know, get in cheap and uh, get a low flop or you're basically just jamming.
You can call suited tens, he's jack off, small bears, but otherwise it's push.
I would be interested, this is at forty, right? I would be interested in seeing how this changes at sixty or eighty.
I wanna see it at sixty too. Is it a big problem?
The jams are gonna largely go away, but they're, well, I, I take that at sixty, we'll have a lot of jamming still, I guess.
So do you want to just see super deep or you want to see sixty over like eight?
Sixty.
Uh, sixty is, all right, whatever. I wanna see where we're so deep that it's like awkward to jam and how we're.
Think sixty. It'll start, it, I think the range construction. You will. I think, uh, the range construction will be similar, Danny. I just think it'll be using a non-all in race size over a jam. It'll like, it'll fix, it'll find a way to mix the ranges. All right. So now the challenge is we have to recreate these ranges. So like, what was the under the gun range that we wanted? I can do it this way, actually. Let's do it this way. So I'll go here. I'll copy this range here on the clipboard. So now, you, you know what? Actually, I think I could just do this. I can do copy. Uh, yeah, that's, that's much easier. Edit range and I can just do wait, control V. There. Okay, so that's locked. Um, control C. We go down to middle position. There's, there's that. So we gotta get the other ones too, though. So it was.
The button?
Well, we gotta, we got here. I need this one. So that's the not all incising.
Went already, no?
No, no, it just, it's, see, it just did the call. So we gotta go down here to the not all in size.
Ah, there we go, not all in.
And then we gotta go down here and grab the jams. We lock out the jam so we don't get weird shit. All right. And so we go to the call node and now we had the cutoff, if I remember correctly.
The button.
It was the button. You're right. So this is the buttons call range. Go down here. Middle position, button call. Ugly. Let's go back here. All right. So we'll just manually do the other ones because it's pretty easy. Do we want them to jam from the button now or do we want to make it not all in?
I wanna let it decide to see if it picks jams.
I, although I, I just need that, I gotta isolate these combos is the only issue.
I would make them raise more.
Okay, so let's just remove jams then. And let's edit this range. And we're just gonna make it do this. So I mean, what we could, well, yeah, we're just gonna do this because it's gonna be easier. So we've locked everything and now we can just see the big binder age. Full tree. All right. So call, we want the button to call and we want to look at what big blind's doing. A little deeper, a little bigger tree. All right, give me a sec. I'll be, uh, be right back.